Let's uh, about to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Uh, we are in the supervisor's hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee. Soon ARS 38431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. It's like they're taking advantage of that. And members of the Board of Supervisors may attend in person or by Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Uh, work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors. Uh, we will conduct a roll call, District One, District Two,
Gomez.
District Three, Antonori is here, all supervisors are present and in person. Um, I don't know if we need to do introductions, I think we know everybody, we know everybody here. So today, we are going to discuss possible uh, directions and uh, processes and procedures regarding the adoption of meeting rules and procedures, meeting rules and procedures uh, for the County Board of Supervisors. Uh, I did a little, I'm sure Mr. Crosby didn't, did, did, did his thing, and I got a bunch of stuff here. Of course, I got Mr. Crosby's book. Um, and I've got, let me do it, here it is, this is uh, this is just my, I didn't print out enough for everybody, I apologize. I should have done that, but, um, it's uh, it's just um, sort of the possible formats, like, I guess you can make copies. So there, I stapled it, but it's Robert's Rules, abbreviated rules, and it's modification rules, and it's, it's basically just some, some procedures for, for conducting abbreviated uh, meetings and procedures without, without the parliamentary aspect of it. Which is like, we're not a legislature, we're not a, you know, at the senate, you know, we're basically doing board meetings for a small organization. So those are tailored for that. So I think it's a nice mix between kind of what we're looking for, what Mr. Crosby's looking for, I think he'll make both of us, but, but, all three of us happy.
Is the flowchart of something we're gonna look at?
Yeah, I, I, that's what, that's what, that's what, he's gonna go print some copies, I should have, I should have printed out, but it, but, it basically, it, it takes this, um, and it, and it kind of puts it into a more adjustable format. So, but, this is just the way we're, today's meeting is just the way we're gonna conduct the meetings, and then we'll have additional, I, I, oh, where did I, where did I put it? Yeah, leave it in your pocket. I brought it, which, here, I do have it in my pocket. I brought the senate rulebook that I had when I was in the senate, and it basically outlines all of the processes um, that are not well explained in Robert's Rules or in the procedures, but it, it talks about uh, how you do roll call votes, reading of the journal, which we don't do here, but in the legislature, you have the first reading, second reading, third reading of bills, uh, business on the president's desk, that would be like business on the chairman's desk, I don't know if that applies to us, petitions, memorials, and remonstrances, remonstrances, uh, orders of the day, introduction, uh, reference of bills, second reading of bills, standing committee reports, all, all that stuff is covered in here. It goes into how you seat people, what order they're seated in, you know, by seniority, it goes into office assignments, it goes into how to stand up and get the speaker's attention, which is in, in here as well, right, but it, it, it talks about the rules for that. Uh, talks about the rules for prayer, it talks about the rules uh, regarding uh, points of order, uh, motions from the floor, all that kind of stuff, but it, it, what I'm thinking of is, maybe we build one of these, uh, and do the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Rules, Little Rulebook. Cause that way there, you could say, if somebody's out of order, alright, you could say, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to point to Rule Nine, Section A of, of the Cochise County Board of Supervisor's Rules, and, and say that this is not being done properly, or whatever, and that, I think is kind of what, that's what I think Mr. Crosby was looking for, I had a little process discipline, right?
Oh yeah, a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. So I mean, that's, that's uh, and then there's rules of the quorum in here, we haven't had an issue with that so far, hopefully we don't have an issue with it. But it talks about uh, impugning, right, so you're, you're not allowed to imply what you think your adversary's thinking. You can't, you can't, you can't uh, say that, you know, Gomez is thinking this, or Crosby is thinking that, it's, it's impugning. Right, you can't impugn their motives, you can't impugn their, what their purposes are, it's got rules in that, it talks about sanctions. You know, what happens to you if you do something bad, what the chair can do to you, you know.
Like a swear jar.
Yeah, like a swear jar, or, or he can, he can suspend you from the floor during debate and only allow you to come in to vote, because the, the constitution only says you have to be granted an opportunity to represent your district on the floor to vote, you don't have to have an office, he could put you in a, a tent on the front lawn if he wanted, no, technically he could. He just has to give you the ability to vote, that's the only thing he can't deny you, is the ability to vote on the floor. Now, they could remove you, and then that's in here, and the ethics committee rules, they could be, you could be referred to the ethics committee, like you've seen the past couple of years with certain members being removed, um, you could do that if, for more egregious offenses, but minor offenses, it's just sanctions, like you get suspended for a week, you're not allowed to talk for a week, you know, so you can't get up and, you could still vote, but you can't get up and say things like that, so all, all.
I don't know how you guys function with such a real.
No, but that's, that's all, that's all, that's all in here, I mean, I mean, there are, there are quite a few of them. And then there's stuff, there's stuff in there dealing with like, you know, personal financial, financial interest, conflict of interest, like for example with Tom, right? He could say, Mr. Chair, I invoke Rule Forty-One, Rule Forty-One is conflict of interest, and I, I abstain from voting, because in the legislature, there is no uh, uh, what's, what's it called, uh, you either vote yes or no, there's no uh, yeah, there's no abstain.
You do not show up.
Yeah, yeah, that's an option, you can not show up, but if you're on the floor, you have to vote yes or no. So if you don't want to vote yes or no, one of the few ways you can get out of that is to invoke Rule Forty-One, and say I have a conflict of interest in this, and that.
Would, on that note, it would be helpful to know what that conflict is, when you abstain from something, explaining what that is.
Yeah, actually, you have to, you have to, prior to the vote, you have to go to the clerk of the senate and present that to the clerk, so she can file that. Um, and then the, the senate president can, if he wants to make it public, um, he could do that, or if the member wants to make it public, but a lot of times, they don't want to make it public, because it's financial. Um, so they don't want to, but it's, it's followed with the clerk, and then, and then there's, but, but it's up to the member, and it's up to us, right? So if you want to disclose it, you're free to disclose it, if you have a conflict.
I think the internet officer was just saying before he came in, might need a little, like, what do you call this, when you curse, you put money in charge?
Yeah, for sure.
Because I'm definitely, that's the way I'm gonna learn these, all this stuff, because hey, Gomez, put money in to the thing, and you know, he didn't follow the rules.
So I mean, if you, if you look at some of these, right, it's got, it's got all the magic words, the parliamentary magic words in here. And a lot of that's in this book that Tom gave us, right, so it just, it just basically talks about, if you want to get more formal, um, for example, instead of just, like, you guys are like, raise, raise your hand right now, what you, you're supposed to do is, you're supposed to say point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Right, you can't do that all the time.
No, you can't do that, right.
When you, when you, when you can do a point of order, it has to be a motion or uh, an act in, on discussion, and you can't just do it to interrupt whoever it is, and you don't like what they're saying, you know, like you're politically abused, point of order.
Yeah, it has to be related to the motion, yeah, correct. Um, but it's all, it's all, it, it goes into the um, the process for amending motions, you know, it's, so it's a, the main motion, and then you, you have a motion to amend the motion, it goes into all that stuff, and it can get complicated. You know, I mean, I, I remember in the legislature, we were, we would go like, four or five amendments deep, so we would have to approve the motion to approve the previous motion that approves the motion previous, and it, I mean, it, yeah, it gets, it gets pretty complicated if you do it that way. So, um, just, just to, to keep in touch, but um, I put it to you guys, I think the, the, the first thing I would do is first, we should probably lay out the way we're gonna conduct the, the meeting, and so there was a question, of course, we know about the letter regarding the prayer, right? So the order that the meeting goes in, where we, our normal uh, Board of Supervisor's meeting, is we, you know, what order do we want to go in? We want, do we want to do the roll call first, and then do uh, the prayer, and then do the pledge, and then do uh, you know, the, you know, we had it set up here. But I mean, we could, we could start out like it is now, where we read all of this stuff in the beginning, and then do a roll call, yeah, yes.
You may recall that at some, maybe at least one of the meetings, I did the prayer before we started the meeting, and I don't know what that does, for, for legal standing, or this is not part of the government, this is not part of the meeting, or is that just trying to uh, circumvent that?
Yeah, it can not be part of the meeting, if it's televised, or, but, you know, we're, we're, you've, you've kind of, you've got the policy that we're holding.
Yeah, so, so the legislature's got the policy, and then Paul, Paul's done some research on it, so I'm okay with keeping it part of the meeting. You know, it's, there's no prohibition against doing that, we do have to have a policy to allow people to come in and give the prayer, and subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, yeah, two minutes, and then, so here's the, here's my suggestion on that. My suggestion on that is, we can each take turns, so one meeting will be District One, next meeting District Two, the next meeting District Three, we could give the prayer, or we could have a constituent give the prayer. And if we have constituents that want to give the prayer, of course, we're not allowed to restrict based on religion, so if someone contacts you and says, Ms. Gomez, at the next meeting, when it's your turn, I would like to give the prayer, and I'm Jewish, and I'd like to give a Jewish prayer, and you could say, sure, and then we just uh, have them notify the clerk, and we put it on the agenda, and then when we get to that point, uh, you can stand up, introduce them, and say, I have a constituent, Mr. So-and-so, or Ms. So-and-so, she's gonna give the prayer, and that's the way the legislature does it.
And they would do it.
They can do it anywhere, yeah, they can do it there, you know, sometimes we have them come up on the dais, uh, if you watch, like, opening day at the legislature, they had the rabbi up front there, right next to the the speaker, the senate president, to do the prayer, you know, so it's, it's, it's up to us, you know, but I, I think, you know, I, I, I believe in the old God and country format, right? God, then country, so the prayer, and then the pledge, and then, and then the, the regular, are you okay with that?
Well, how about if somebody wants to desecrate the flag, instead of saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
What do you mean by that?
Uh, coming to stomp all over the flag, they don't believe in the Pledge of Allegiance, they, they are against the flag symbol.
To stomp on the flag?
No.
It used to be.
Yeah.
There was, you couldn't like, you couldn't, but, no.
No, it's, first amendment, first amendment, that's why there was the, several bills that went through the Congress, the Flag Protection Amendment, they all failed, and were overturned.
The like, couldn't let the flag bring on the.
And that's US Code Eighteen, I forgot what it is, that's just rules of etiquette for the flag, but that doesn't, that doesn't apply to protesters and freedom of speech, right, so.
So to me, it's the same, it's the same issue, whether you want to have, uh, you know.
A prayer or a pledge.
Yeah.
Anybody can come in.
Well, for instance, let's say, we, we're gonna look at the, at the, and it says, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, what does that mean?
Today.
What's twenty-twenty-five mean?
The year.
Based on what?
A calendar.
It's based, but year, year of our Lord, the AD.
The year of our Lord, yeah, okay, so you can't, can't think what the year is, when you're gonna read their agenda, because that's.
So that gets back to the reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions of court.
We're going.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, I get you, I get you, so.
Well, what's the difference between, between desecrating the flag, I don't believe in, in uh, the flag symbol, I wanna, I wanna be able to desecrate the flag.
Well, the court ruled on that, you're allowed to.
Policy doesn't, yeah, policy is going to talk about rotating, you know, ecumenical fashion, in terms of privately established laws.
Right.
So it's okay, somebody wants to come in and stomp on it.
No, 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 they're subject, they're subject to reasonable time, place, and manner, right, so, so the, the Supreme Court ruled, so if we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance, the reasonable time, place, and manners, if they don't like that, they can walk out, or they can stand silently, or they don't have to say.
They could sit down.
They, yeah, they could sit down, or they don't have to, they don't have to say them, but just like with the Star Spangled Banner, right, they want to take a knee, they can take a knee, right? But they can't interrupt it, they can't stomp on it, or, or disrupt the meeting by, by doing something.
We have a legitimate interest in having an orderly meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Is disturbing the peace, uh, you know, if they would use that as a form of their First Amendment expression, you know, we can replace it, but the other side of the resource, you can go express yourself in public, but the other side of the equation, you know.
And I know, you know, somebody could come in and give a prayer for the devil, let's just say, that's, I know it's offensive, but, you know, they have a right, they have a right to be offensive.
So you mean, so say, uh, the Wiccans, like, and there's a people in Bisbee decide they want to come and say something.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Yep, and would you sit there, and if you don't like it, you're free to get up, I mean.
So we can get up and all.
Yeah, you can get up and leave, but they, we can't deny them their two minutes, that's where we get in trouble, is if we do that, because then you're picking one religion over another.
Okay, if you get up and leave for the Wiccans, but you don't get up and leave for the Baptists, and you're, you're a member of the government, aren't you saying a message?
Well, I get up and leave. No, you aren't, you are, so that's, that's as a personal, that is a personal decision, it is not an official position, the official position was, they were given the opportunity to speak, they got their two minutes.
You're a government official.
Right.
And you get up and leave, there's no message there?
No message, I don't want to hear you.
We walk off the dais, we walk off the dais and walk off the floor all the time, all the time, they, you can't deny them the right.
If we do this, we can't deny anybody the right to speak.
We, we had, we had people do newspapers, when they would just start, they would pull a newspaper, you know, it's, it's, it's rude, it's obnoxious, but it's not a violation of their rights, so as long as you don't violate their rights, I mean, you're the lawyer, I mean, that's the way I remember it when I was up there, we, the speaker would say, if you, if you're offended, you're free to leave the floor.
Yeah, I, I can look at those questions.
But, but, we've had, we have members leave the floor, we have other members sit there and shake their head, roll their eyes, you know, you're allowed to do that. Now, you'll be accountable, because the media will take pictures of it, and I'm sure somebody's gonna write something mean about it in the newspaper, but that's on you, you know, it's on me, I, I don't mind getting people writing bad stuff.
If a saint comes up and wants to say a prayer, then I would get up and leave the room, and that's my statement, but like you said, you're allowing it all.
They get their two minutes.
So if we open that door, we open the door to everybody.
Yeah, you have to.
And I even, I even reached out to a lot of pastors and stuff like that, and they were saying, you should just go to another room and ask people to pray, and let them, you know, lay their hands on you, that might be the best option than having it here, so I think there's a lot of uh, turmoil even within the Christian community of whether or not you should do it.
Well, well, you know, uh, develop policy that respects the establishment laws, and, you know, reflects our community in an ecumenical way, keeping it, you know, so that it stays orderly within two minutes, I can, you know, research the other issues about whether a public official, you know, sigils, something crosses any line, I can advise you about that separately, um, and, and that's what we'll do, we'll just keep it orderly. And what I, what I guess, what I was also.
Yeah, my personal philosophy is.
Things that I'm thinking about as I think about this, is safeguarding the county against unnecessary.
That's your job, right.
It costs money, if we invite a lawsuit, so, you know, let's be smart.
Personally, for me, you know, I spent twenty years in the army, to me, the First Amendment is just like the Second Amendment, of course, I love privilege too. They're sacred to me, right, because I spent twenty years of my life physically defending them, right, so I, I take them seriously, as I, I'm sure you guys do, I'm not saying you don't, but to me, if somebody wants to come in, and they have a First Amendment right, and yeah, it may offend me, it may tick me off, but I'll sit there and just say, you know what, I fought for their right to say stupid stuff, and say whatever they want, they have, that, you know, you have, you have the freedom to be ridiculous in this, in this country, right? That's, that's the beauty that I fought for, and I, I defended, I, I believe in that right, and it may not be something I appreciate, but, yeah, so what?
And there's nothing wrong with deciding just to turn your back, as an official to walk out the door, right, if they're giving somebody that a break, it's like they can do the same thing, and you do a prayer.
Let, let me, look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I got.
The distinction is whether you're government official or, yeah.
And so this is my worries, is actually the capacity as government official.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think.
I don't think it's gonna happen.
If, if you're doing it, I don't know, look, look into it, because I know we walk off the floor, I didn't, but I mean, I saw members, because we had uh, it was a, one of those very alternative religions come in one day, and we had several members walk off the floor, and nothing came of that. So they were granted the opportunity to leave, now, the speaker didn't walk off, but, you know, members on the floor did, so, yes, Ms. Gomez.
Have you heard religion defined as a sincerely held belief system, have you heard religion defined as that? That's, it, when I, well, in, uh, some kind of training, in, in the government, and it's, if, if it's your sincerely held belief system, it's the equivalent of somebody else's religion.
Kiersten Sinema had a lady come in that gave a, like, uh, nature prayer or something, she was a, like a staunch environmentalist, and she gave a prayer for, for nature, and that was her religion, right, so you, you don't get to pick what the, we're not gonna have a religion referee to say, now, that's a real religion.
Right, and courts won't do that, there's this ecclesiastical doctrine, right, nobody claims to have sincerely held beliefs, the court says that the proper way to interpret Catholic doctrine is this way, judges say no.
Unless you're trying to get out of the COVID vaccine, then it's, then it's, then it's a different story, but usually, you're right, that's the case, if someone says it's a.
But that doesn't uh, impinge on our ability to, you know, exercise order in our meetings.
Reasonable time, place, and manner, which is what the court said, right, so as long as we, and we don't deny the rights, and then we're fine, but, and then after, after we do those three things, um, the next part gets into the parliamentary procedure, uh, piece of it, right, so the formally introduction of motions, for example, right, there's, do we, do we start following the, the formal? That's where the next part of discussion, I would, I would think that.
I think everybody has a flowchart up at their, it's on the dais, and to my knowledge, that always worked, there might be some reason sometime when you wouldn't want to do the motion first, I don't know what it is, but I think use the motion, and the second first, don't vote, do everything else, and come back, okay? We've got, and, and, and the reason why, you don't forget, you don't forget, do we, do we make a motion or not, because when you do twenty of them a day.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it was, it was the same thing I was saying about uh, uh, public hearing, it's, do we, do we open the public hearing, does it close the public hearing? However it works, so it's legal, and, and it's easy to, for everybody to understand.
I don't get that public meeting thing, you know, why don't we, why don't we do that?
Public hearing?
Public hearing, why don't we do that separate uh, part from the meeting, where we go through the meeting, and then we go to a public hearing, why do we do it in the, in the meeting, what is the reason?
What is a part of the public hearing, is hearing from the P and Z guy, he's not the public, what's, what's a, what's the public hearing is, is the, the citizens coming in and saying.
Right.
For this, I'm against that, and so when Matthew comes in, and he's saying what the rules are and stuff like that, that's not a public hearing, that's just a presentation.
We do the public hearing before we even let him talk, though.
It, it doesn't matter, as long as you do it, what order, what, what is it?
I'm just not familiar with that, I've not experienced that.
Given the public anticipated process.
But they're still restricted by the having to submit a request to speak?
No, they're not.
Oh, they're not? Anybody can talk?
At the public hearing, it isn't. Once the public hearing's open, we don't, it's not a request to speak requirement, anybody who wants to speak on the public hearing item.
It is. Call to the public, we take a written form, um, you know, people can do it at the last minute, and that's, I think, just as a housekeeping, you know, so.
So are we limited to the same restrictions that, that we, if it's not on the agenda, we can't, do they have to talk to the agenda items only?
Yeah, if you're gonna do the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
We're talking about, so that the public hearing, they can only speak on the item that's on the public hearing.
Okay, 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 but if they want, if somebody else wanted to do a call to the public that wasn't a public hearing item, but it still had to do with that agenda item, they're just generally against trailers or something like that, I hate trailers, stuff like that, then they, they're restricted to their three minutes, somebody coming in, unless you want to make it policy that everybody and anybody that wants to talk about the public hearing item is restricted to three minutes, otherwise, they're not restricted.
They're restricted to three minutes.
Where is it written?
But that's, but we can do that, reasonable time, place, and manner.
Saying is, is a, is a point that the chair and the board can agree on, is what is that time that the clerk should set for the public to speak during a public hearing?
Okay, three minutes is okay with me, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
So it's three minutes.
Can't, can't vote on it. We can, we can.
We can put it there.
We could put it out in a thing to vote on.
Should we explore the three minutes for a public hearing?
But, when, when I was a chairman, committee chair, uh, we, we, we had a, we had the three-minute rule, but in some issues, some bills, you would have fifty people lined up there, we're all wanting to line up and talk on that bill, so we would, we would make sort of a, a supplementary rule on the, on the dais, that we're gonna restrict you to one minute, or if three of you want to get together and combine your meetings and let one person speak, yeah, we, yeah, we were doing that, we, well, I'm just saying, it's, it was a discretionary thing that the chair could do.
Right, I was just saying, I, I didn't want you to go down the road of ceding your time to a third person.
I'd suggest that as a parallel reason, we, we had it come up in the, uh, the discussion about the hand count, if you recall, and you, and there was a group of people that just said, we're gonna cede all of our time to like this one person.
And then they, that person had.
So then that person had, right?
Oh.
So.
You don't want to do that, they'll, they'll just roll people in here, and then.
Right, it got to be beyond.
Okay, alright.
But we could, but.
It was a strategy.
Alright.
That was a little one. Because like, they, they, and had never been done before, and the chair allowed it, it wasn't, there wasn't a rule against it, right, there wasn't a rule against it, is my point.
When the, oh, so, Annie did allow people to come up and talk for one minute, right? Well, what she also did, which I thought was, I couldn't believe it, was she then told people what they could not say.
What?
Yeah.
Did it go on repetition?
She said, I don't want you speaking, because two of us came up on, on, she had said she wouldn't override of, of the vote of the power, the P and Z people, and, and she said it several times, so I referred to it, another person referred to it, and then she said, okay, you can come up, but don't repeat what the other people have said, you can't do that, can you? You can't.
It's very common then for a chair to make that decision to move the meeting along, if the public comments have become repetitious in nature, it's something the chair can decide to do, if you want to rule against it.
So then, well, the other, the other thing we did was, was we, in our, in our system, we could, we could see how many people signed in, because in the legislature, even though you you still had to do the uh, request to speak system, they had, it's a computer that was out there, that you could just, before you come to the meeting, you could just type your name and stuff in, and automatically put you, put you on the.
But I have a problem with trying, even though everyone, you see, you have five people who can say the same thing, it's still their right, it's freedom of speech, to be able to say that. So if they feel at a point, it's very important, and they want to hammer that point in, then how are we to say they can't say that?
We restrict freedom of speech.
You, that's right.
You have the place and the time.
I, I, yeah, there is a, a way.
Joe, I know you're not the.
So I, if I object to, these two guys want to restrict the way people are talking, I could object to, there'd be a mechanism to say, I don't care you doing this.
Yeah, you can override the chair, I mean, it's a simple.
But I, it would just be me, seeing you two guys.
Well, no, you could, you could, you could.
But I can make my point, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or you could get another vote, we'd overrule the.
Overrule the chair, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you guys, there was another way to get.
Right.
Okay. Alright, so, so let me just.
That will not happen very often, but it will, it will happen, but, did you have some alarm?
So, yeah, one more question.
Okay.
So, you know, like in, in Douglas, they have a public, I don't remember what they call, Call the Public, where anyone can come and speak on something that is not on the agenda, we don't have that?
It has to be on the agenda, it has to be a county issue.
Okay, so they can talk about.
Pima County, they got a guy that comes in and reads a chapter out of like a Nancy Drew mystery book, or every, every meeting for like three minutes, I kid you not.
So maybe Sharon can just explain kind of the parameters of what the Call the Public is.
So typically, and it's in, I believe, through the open meeting law, it's also defined in that manual, Call the Public has to, they did have to do something related to the county that's not already on the agenda, so, that's Call to the Public, and so when you have people come in, we have no election matters on the agenda, but they still want to talk about election matters, they do it during Call the Public.
And they have to put in a.
They put in a form, it's online or in person, but we have requested that they submit it by nine o'clock of the day of the meeting, because with the online feature, the clerk has to do certain things with teams to make sure the person can unmute them. things with teams to make sure the person can unmute themselves. There's other blocks that we put for people who haven't done the call of public. So we don't just have everybody unmuted.
Disrupting, disrupting.
The meeting. So there's certain technical things we need the time to achieve when they're particularly if they're, um, wanting to speak on teams. So that's why we ask for it from nine o'clock when we didn't have that deadline. It was very, um, difficult for the clerk to get the information all organized prior to the meeting for the chair to handle.
What was it? You were gonna say that?
I was going back to the public hearing. We still encourage people to fill out a speaker request form because I can accurately get their name.
For their report.
Yeah. So oftentimes people don't say their name and address beforehand and this way.
That should be a rule too. That's what we should, we should have state their, their name and where they live.
It should. We did in the past.
Just name and town.
Yeah. So you know that they're calling from Scott.
Yeah, name, name and town. That's all. Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, the subsection that, uh, Sharon was talking about is in the same subsection of open meeting laws as if somebody says, I don't like Chairman Frank Antonori's blah, 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 whatever it is. So you can reply to that or you can reply to somebody that brings up a point that you agree with uh, about, well, we need to do X, Y and Z about subject X. And then you, then you maybe turn to the administrator and say, uh, administrator, would you please put subject X on the schedule so we can talk about A, B and C? As Mr. Jones has pointed out, this is a pertinent issue, blah, blah, blah. So it's in the same section of the law.
So, and then we have, sorry, one more thing. Um, we have had people come and speak on items of no county business or they want to, um, impugn a person of a different political party for something and the county has no jurisdiction over that matter. Um, that happened repeatedly, but.
Fair.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
Mr. Correa, what is the connection between the county fair?
Yeah, I meant to.
Oh, well, we, we provide a sponsorship, um.
It's in, it's in Title 11. Title 11 says we're supposed to establish a fairgrounds and maintain a fairgrounds.
So we, I mean, if you want to get up on that subject, there's a whole resolution of how the county handles the fair.
Because I think the fair, that county fair is really dire need of some direction.
They have a, so yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay, so that's a nice thing to write down because that's pretty big.
I can give you more briefing on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, what was I, what was I gonna say? You were saying, oh, so if somebody comes and the only time that you can talk or about something like this, oh, you know, your supervisor Gomez, you know, you're bullshit or whatever. Cause you want the jail on his face.
That's fine.
And then I can then say, excuse me, but this is why I'm doing it, but only if they refer you a person, right?
Are they impugning your character or about?
But they have to say.
Say Ms. Gomez.
But they have to say supervisors from district two.
No, 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 it has to be, if you determine that they're talking, they're talking about you, you can interrupt. Sure, you can say.
No, you don't have to say.
You can't interrupt them. Yeah.
You gotta wait until the end of all, everybody to say, I'm gonna say.
Just like me.
Yeah, that's a tactic, that's a tactical move. Because that prevents somebody from coming up and refuting what you said. So you get to get the last word.
Okay. And then do I say, excuse me, chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to respond.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's going to be at the end of the call to the public. And then moving on to the next agenda, I mean, they said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to respond to, and it, it.
The comment.
You say that.
It, it's hard to keep track of everybody.
Yeah.
So you gotta, you gotta read notes.
Yeah. And so then just wait to the very end.
Right.
Yeah, that way there you get the last.
And what, what, what's, what's Mr. Jones' issue? What's Mr. Smith's issue and all that kind of stuff? And yes, it's kind of keep track of it.
So is there anything specific that, I mean, we're talking about a lot of our current procedures and kind of a blend of things. I'm trying to understand where we, where any of this departs from how we currently operate.
Well, I'd like to point out things.
Okay.
I, I think you're getting into, you want to get to the formal language area.
Well, I, I, I gotta say, what, what doesn't happen? And.
Oh, okay.
When do we want to hear from the attorney or not?
Oh, okay.
Is that on our agenda? Uh, it's meetings.
It's rules, it's rules for the candidates in meetings.
Does the attorney interrupt? Does the attorney? Yeah. Does the attorney, uh, require anything besides somebody asking the attorney, Mr. Attorney, what do you think? And I, I've said, the attorneys have said very hopeful things.
See, that, you bring up an interesting point. Let me, let me. So in, again, I'm just going off my legislative experience. In a committee meeting, you, you, you have the, the elected members of the committee, but you also have committee members that are not elected, right? So you have the professional staff, you have the attorney, you know, you have the clerk of the committee, you know, that, that keeps the notes and stuff. So we're pretty similar to that, right? So you have the elected members, but you still have board members here. You have the clerk of the board, you have the county administrator, you have the county attorney, you know, so you're technically part of the board.
I'm not.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. What I'm saying is you're, you're, you're part of, you're part of, you're, 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 you're here. Right? You're part, you're part, you're on this side of the, the, the fence.
Yeah.
So you should have to follow pretty much the same rules is what I'm getting at. So you would have to say, Mr., you, you can intercede and say, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a point. You have to have that, he's got to have that ability to do that.
Well, I, I'm happy to, you know, uh, if there's a point of order information that I think is helpful to pipe up.
But if you're seeing something that you need to address that could get us in trouble.
Right.
You have to have a mechanism by which you can intervene on that. So I, I think he's got to have a way to say.
I, I, I will take your direction, you know, as a board if, uh, and whatever your preference is. So there may be times when I, I discern, you know, that in my opinion, you may be, somebody may be steering off with the agenda. And to help keep you between the navigational beacons, um, I can or I cannot, if you prefer, um, pipe up and.
No, I would prefer you did.
But I think the point that you saw us talking about is that when I watched a lot of meetings, while you were speaking, they cut you off. Instead of allowing you to say what you wanted to say. So there would be, you're talking about having some format that you're speaking and then after you speak, maybe then the, the term goes.
Yeah, go ahead, explain it.
Right, so.
Yeah. We'd hear from you. Go ahead.
Thirty eight, four, thirty one, zero, seven, violations, enforcement, civil penalty, removal from office in camera view. So we're talking about meetings. Any person affected by an alleged violation of this article, the attorney general or the county attorney for the county in which an alleged violation of this article occurred may commence a suit in superior court in the county in which the public body ordinarily meets for the purpose of requiring compliance with or prevention of violations of this article by the public body as a whole or determine the applicability of this article related, uh, to matters of legal actions of the public body. So this is placing the, uh, either the attorney general or the county attorney in supervisory position over the legislative body, which I think is a violation of the separation of powers of the constitution. They don't supervise us. The, the attorney general does not supervise us, does not.
Yeah.
Does not.
Sounds like a lawsuit.
Well.
We're already talking about two or three. What are you gonna go do? You want to add that to the list? I, I can get Correa working on that one too.
No, I mean, what does it say here? I mean, it.
Well, I mean, I've got.
Not all, that, that's only up, up to the part in the underline. It says yada, yada, yada.
No, I, I mean, I, I would agree that there are aspects of open meeting law that I believe are violations of what I consider our free speech rights, which are again, your, your separation of powers argument. Yeah, that's.
Right. So it, there's a strong public policy, you know, in our country and in our state like that of of open government transparency and accountability.
Big fan of that.
And the open meeting law speaks to that. Um, there is also a lot of tradition of attorney generals have an independence so that they can execute and enforce law. Um, when it comes to that provision of the open meeting law, it says county attorneys can be responsible. It's been our, um, traditional policy, I think here that anything that involved is the board of supervisors is something that the state attorney general, you know, properly, which take care of.
So there's not.
Tom, Pete.
Disharmony, torn up. Now, I have had allegations where cities have called because under that statute, they can't. Uh, and they would call the elected county attorneys saying, we have a complaint of an open meeting law violation from the, that's in city council. Kind of like the county attorney.
So what's the appeal process for that? So let's just say somebody accuses me of violating the open meeting law. It goes to you guys, you guys say, okay, conflict, we're going to send it to the AG. And the AG comes down, then, then what? So she does an investigation. She doesn't like me. She says, oh, I think Antonori violated the open meeting law. I'm going to find him and force him to go through additional training for however many hours or whatever. Can I appeal that? What's the appeal process? How do I fight that? What if I disagree with her? What if I want to tell her to go fly a kite? And she gonna, she gonna send the state police down here to throw me in irons and drag me off to the U.S. guy?
Ultimately, right?
Yeah. But I mean, there's, there's, it sounds like there's no appeal for that.
I can look at that. I.
Yeah.
I have that question.
Get indicted. You get indicted. Yeah. That's what, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's a.
No, we're not talking about. Well, we are talking about meetings actually.
And so I think that goes to the point of, um, if you'd like me to, to help, you know, then I can use the point of order process if something, I, I, I agree with Tom's reading of the open meeting law statute too. And that you can discuss matters and the things that are reasonably related to, right? Um, so there, there's some, uh, some flexibility in the joints there. Uh, it's one of those get really off.
But to his point though, when you and I talked, and I believe in my opinion that the law has been involuntarily, what's the word I'm looking for, but, but expanded upon, interpreted, interpreted through interpretive process, expanded upon to encompass more than actually what the original legislative intent was. And then that could be weaponized and used. And that's what, that's what, when I told you I want to challenge that aspect of it, that was part of what he just said is I think we do need to challenge that because people take something and then they, they make it more stringent, more restrictive. For example, like we talked about, if I call Kathleen and say, hey, Kathleen, you want to go to lunch today? Oh, somebody got my cell phone record. Antonori called Gomez at twelve fifty one AM. They violated the open meeting law. They had a quorum. You know, that's, that's not what the law says, but people interpreted this that.
And what I dislike, and this happens a lot in DC, is that they make rules, but they're not abiding to those rules. So the state legislature doesn't, I'm gonna. So it's only for city council.
Right. Well, that was the other thing I talked to him about, equal protection under, under open meeting law, right? So either everybody follows it and force the legislature to follow it or.
Order.
Exactly.
So, so, and then when you're getting in a situation like us, where there's three of us, and we've had already so many situations where ideally it would behoove us to have spoken about strategy and what we're going to do in the lawsuit or I'm going to deal with the sheriff and what he says about us in, in public and on the, on the media.
Yeah, we can't talk about how we want to respond.
Right. And, and so then, you know.
Without having a work session.
Without a work session, then it delays it. And then, you know, some of those things are, you have to do it that day that it comes out. You can't wait three or four days because it won't get picked up. It's just, it's almost as you have to be.
And that's, that's the point again, I was making. So if we see something in the paper, Terry Joe writes a scathing article about us, right?
And she would never.
Yeah, she would never. And then Kathleen, Kathleen, we're making her, making her famous. So Kathleen calls me up and says, Frank, did you see this? We gotta, we gotta, that's an open meeting violation to some people.
It's a strategy.
Yeah, yeah. She just went, we gotta, we gotta.
What, what, what's supposed to do is you don't vote behind closed doors.
Right. That's, that's what it's supposed to be.
About, you know, issues that are.
And I don't say this, Frank.
You're acting as.
I'm gonna make a deal with you.
Yeah.
You vote my way, but the jail.
Yeah, that's.
Be busy. That's different.
Right.
But if you're talking about the fact like, okay, let's just say, for example, and I can't imagine this ever happening, that I say, you know, Sharon is just honestly saying what I'm talking about. She's not doing what I asked. Who, I go to you to say, hey, I want a work session to talk about you because I don't think you're doing what I want you to do. Or like, oh, really? So you think, what do you think? Am I wrong about this? Uh, how am I going to deal with this? How's it gonna be the way that you talked to me? I mean, I can't do it.
Well, we could have another work session about open meeting law. This was supposed to be our roles.
We were gonna get the, what was it? We were gonna bring down to come talk to us?
The Ombudsman.
Yeah.
Ombudsman.
Yeah, he's always happy to do that. We've got sixteen minutes and then I've got to go meet with.
Yeah, yeah, alright. I, I got you. But, but we go back to Tom, we'll go back to you because you wanted to go over the stuff, uh, with the attorney. I, I, I think he intervenes as someone that wants to make a point. He, he says, Mr. Chairman, point the border or whatever you want. No?
No, you don't want that. You don't want the board. But I have the board.
But, but, but how do you, how do you, I, I get what you're trying to give. But how? But no, but if he, if I'm about to do something that's going to get this county suit and cost the taxpayers money, I want him to have the ability to, to stop me.
Point of order. I don't want to hear from Mr. Correa. What about, and so I vote that we don't hear from Mr. Correa. How do you vote?
Well, I'd say, I don't know what the heck I'm doing and maybe I need advice.
Well, that's, that's fine. And, and.
I don't have a hearing.
Okay, that's fine. So I get out of vote. And so we hear from him.
Oh, I get your point. I get your point, but, but what, what, what I'm getting at is the initial point of intervention, right? So we're, we're going to, the guy's sitting here, right? The guy's sitting here and we're saying something or we're talking about something. He's got to have the ability to give us a heads up. That's the point I'm getting at. He's got to have a way to intervene. And what is the method for the county?
Throw in the fire?
Same thing, same thing, same thing with the county administrator, right? County administrator may need to intervene. Say we're putting out incorrect information relative to something that staff is doing, right? So we're wrong. And she could say, oh, uh, point of information. Point of, point of information, Mr. Chairman, I would like to clarify that the public works department doesn't do road paving on private roads. We don't, you know, or something like that, because I may have been putting out some, that, you know, or something like, or Joe asked like an IT issue or something. We gotta have a, a mechanism.
The road, Cochise County attorney here who's going to interrupt every time you say.
Yeah, that, that's what I get what he's here.
So maybe can we have something in there that says, if the county attorney is using their power to intercede and not even let him finish, because I, I saw a lot of that been happened to you. And I'm like, God, I mean, wouldn't even let him finish and then was talking over him that the board can say, you know, you're out of order, county attorney. We are, or, or, you know, what you're doing is not correct. Something that allows us then to shut.
The problem is still.
Sure. The chair recognizes or doesn't.
The point of order is not directed through the chair by the county attorney. He's not on the board of supervisors. This is a board of supervising meetings.
No, I, I got you. The hand, I raised my hand to try to get attention and the board and the chair recognizes me and does a point of order then. And is there any mechanism to try and get the attention of the board?
How do you, yeah, how do you get the chairman's attention parliamentary procedure wise?
I'm just curious.
Well, we can talk about that. Let me.
Well, that's what we're talking about. That's what, that's what you, you, you brought it up. You brought it, you brought that up with Mr. Correa.
County attorney, eleven, five, thirty two, powers and duties definition. When required, give a written opinion to the county officers on matters relating to the duties of their officer. In other words, if it isn't a written opinion, it doesn't count. It isn't real. It isn't binding.[1654.27] It isn't binding.
But then, uh, but then it's time, time issue, right? I mean, we're saying something that could get us, could get Mays to come and indict us, and he's trying to say, hey, I mean, hoping that he says.
You can table the issue. You say, Mr. Correa, how long will it take you to create a, a signed, uh, written opinion about this subject? You say, I need two weeks.
No, but that's after the fact though, Tom. That's after the fact. You know, so. No, because if you're, if you're having a discussion, if we're going down a road that's going to get us in trouble, right? How do we know to then say, Mr. Correa, can you give us an opinion on that? We have, we have to have some intervention or some point to intervene.
It says, when required.
Well, that's.
I would say maybe five.
Again, I'm trying to get to the, I'm trying to get to the crux of that. How, how do people that need to interject for our protection? That's the way I look at it. How do they interject for our protection? How, how do they do that? That's the process we're having to.
This is, this is under the section of County Attorney 11532, right?
We need a light.
Okay, so.
I put a light?
Well, I mean, now I.
Like, uh, may I speak lights? What, what, I, it's just a practical question.
And I can't understand where you're coming from.
And I know we want to refer back to statutes and rules, but is, is there a practical way that it'd be acceptable for everyone?
That we don't allow bureaucrats and attorneys to take over in the board of supervisors?
Totally agree.
Okay.
In my role of serving you, I feel like I need to impart information in the moment. How can I do that?
They aren't elected officials, but they are somehow, I don't know the legal term, but they are like officers of the county though. Officers like Laura, right?
I am an attorney, I am the attorney for the county.
Right.
Um, and so in the county's interest.
You're right, you're, you're an officer of, I'm, I'm not trying to split.
For the board of supervisors.
I'm not trying to split here.
You can't hire them, you can't fire them. And whoever, whoever the county attorney says is our attorney for the board is who our attorney.
No, no, I, I think, well, something that we need to talk about.
Well, you can hire outside the attorney.
Because, because, right, you declare disharmony and tell, tell the county attorney that you want somebody else to, you could do that.
But you, you, you know, you were just talking about, how do you take care of that? At, at the, at the minute?
No, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So, so, so Sharon says, or realizes, we're putting out bad information. We're, we're something that's going to get in the paper, let's just say. And she's trying to save us from an embarrassing moment. How does she address us to get our attention? Or Paul sees something that is going to bring Chris Mays down here because she just loves Cochise County. She's always looking for an excuse to come down to Cochise County. So how does Paul interject a point to ensure that we're not about to step into something that's going to get all over our shoes? How, how does, how does he, that's what I'm trying to get, Tom. I mean, that's, I, I, I'm just trying to, I want to make sure, I'm sure, I, we want to make sure we're not going to do something that's going to get us in trouble politically or legally. He's more the legal thing and she's more the political.
I just read apart and I can find it again. Said, said one of these binders somewhere, how basically all these open meeting law, potential open meeting laws are, they think enforced by either the, the county attorney or the, or the attorney general.
I get your point, yeah.
So, so, and, and I've talked about this before.
We could, we could, we could vote to overrule if we want and expose ourselves to potential problems, but, but, but he buys, he could, I'm just getting to the first part. The first part is how does he get our attention that he, he would like to make a point? Which is point of order is what.
That is orderly way to do it.
Yeah, the orderly way is point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order. I would like to make a point. That's where the term comes from, right? So he wants to make a point. And he says, I believe the discussion you're, you're having right now could potentially lead to X, Y, Z, right? And then we could say, okay, point, point taken, Mr. Correa, I disagree.
I disagree.
I disagree. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, that's what I'm getting at, Tom, right? So, but we gotta have a way. Or if Sharon, like we're, we're putting out that, uh, we're going to be closing down the voting centers, uh, you know, at six o'clock. And she could say, oh, uh, uh, point of order, seven o'clock is the time that we're closing the vote centers down. She's gotta have a mechanism.
Well, I'm not trying to say that the administrative or the county attorney.
But they're technically.
Never considered any good say.
No, 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 they're, I kind of read somewhere in Title 11 that, that they are somehow officers of the board.
Well, so the, the section here is from 11532, the county attorney statute, that another subsection nine, says that we act as the legal advisor to the board supervisors in attendance meetings. Um, you know, I mean, so broadly, there is a, like, going to having us attend your meetings and to give you legal advice in the interest of the county.
Can I see?
And that's an orderly way to do it.
I think what we're trying to do too is kind of legislate or put in policy human nature, right? You're in a situation where you had some staff and you had boards that were against you, wanted to cut you up at all costs and did it in a way which was not acceptable. But I don't know how you, you know, we've got a funding board now, but we have a funding staff. That's one thing, but when you have a new board, there might be two new members that are going to be, and he's led again and then try to do the same thing. So how are you going to be able to figure out how to make policies?
Yeah, crazy, crazy stuff could happen. I mean, one of us can get hit by a bus and we gotta appoint somebody, right? And, and then they're up for election in '26. Then you got a new board member here. And that can dramatically, in a three-member board, that can dramatically change the board, right? So how do you write that? But then they can change it too. Then the new board can change it.
They should amend it at any time they want.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I'm all for having this discussion because I'm just going to read, read this, which is the draft that somebody gave this out. Uh, Laura, did you give this out recently? I've got the scribbled all over the copy, but I, this is just, debate requires a second to have been given to the motion on the table. Compliance with Arizona Open Meeting Laws requires that no debate shall be allowed as any other issue than the immediate question under this consideration by the board. That's not true.
Yes, I agree.
All in page four.
Okay.
Well, the bottom of it. Uh, if any board member, the county attorney, deputy county attorney, county administrator, deputy county administrator reasonably believes that a speaker has strayed from the immediate question, point of order may be false. Okay, so, and I pointed this out to the old county administrator, you know, it, it got worse the next time I said, hey, you know, well, let's add, let's, let's add, you know, the janitor. Let's add, you know, members of the public and everybody could, could, but I, I've actually had members of the public out there, point of order, like they think they're on the board. Okay, and, and I, I, not lately, but, but it can happen. Somebody, it, it's like being at the state meeting or something like that where anybody on the floor, like 1,500 people can call a point of order. But they're a member of the committee. I understand. Yeah, I understand. Here they're not, but they think they are.
Right.
So anyway, uh, that was, uh, that, that's where this issue was addressed here in this page four paragraph, what did I say? H, I think. So if you, anybody cares and looked at it again, I don't know.
Yeah, well, Tom, when you read the statute in the last session we had, you were on point that the statute does say, you know, all reasonably related to.
Right. And it doesn't say as determined by the county attorney.
Well, it does not. But I'm here to help.
Right. But that, that, that comes back to you, you just can override them with two votes.
Yeah, sure.
Just get two, you and one other member and you can override, you can override. And then you could actually compel the chair to tell them to sit down and shut up. I've seen that on the floor too. We, we've actually done roll call votes to, to, to turn people off. But I mean, still, we never got past the thing. How do, how do they intervene? Just let them do point of order? I know technically you're seeing that as they're not members of the board, so they can't do port of, point of order, but they.
I think they, they can't u- under any parliamentary procedure you're going to find where they're not members of, of the body.
They're officers of the board. We appoint officers. We could, I think Title 11 says we're allowed to do that, appoint, appoint officers of the board, right?
You may.
Yeah, we may.
Did you appoint Mr. Correa?
For purposes of board meetings, if that's what it takes to bring me into the, uh, the roles of parliamentary.
Well, how about this? You might like this, this might be, I'm just brainstorming here. Let's just say the county attorney decides to assign a civil, civil attorney to be an advisor in the capacity of the county attorney. Then our, I gotta be careful how I say this, advise and consent role. Maybe we say to the county attorney, we accept and appoint Mr. Correa as an officer of the board, or we reject Mr. Correa as non-officer of the board, so all he can do is sit there and take notes.
Okay, so is.
I mean, does that.
Are we going to do his appraisal and, and determine whether he gets a promotion or a raise?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm saying, we don't have.
And you don't have the power of them.
Yeah, we could, we can turn them off. We could say, we unappoint you to the board and you're not allowed to speak anymore. I'm, Tom, I'm trying to find that, I'm trying to find the, the, the answer here.
Typical.
Yeah, right.
No, I need advice.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I know I do, but you are.
From a guy that's been dragged into court, I can tell you, it's.
No, I'm, I'm happy to just raise.
Yeah, well, that's, it's still a point, it's, you're still, you're still.
Well, what are we gonna say?
If, if we're trying to get some, some order and discipline based on parliamentary rules, procedure, the, the proper way to do it is to do a point of order. And the technicality that Mr. Crosby is making is because you are not a, an elected member of the board of the body that's under the statute, you're not able to do that because that would not preclude somebody else in the audience from raising their hand and saying, point of order, point of order. But I would argue that you're an officer of the board, technically, I don't know what the legal term is, so is, so is everybody.
For purposes of, of meeting, yeah.
You know, specifically the attorney, the clerk, and the county administrator as officers of the board. They should be able to point of order, intervene. I mean, Laura has done it a few times when we, you know, and I've seen Sharon, even Joe's is chipped in. But I mean, they're sitting here, even though they're not sitting there, they are up here on this side of the wall.
So you don't want them to control you, but you want them to advise you.
Right, so they should maybe be able to make a point. What, if you want to change the wording, we, we can change the wording. You could say a point of interjection or a point of information or a point.
Point of information.
Yeah. What do you think?
Uh, I'm open to, uh, whatever it is, for the best interest of the county.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Just, just say point of information. And then you do it through the chair, Mr. Chairman, point of information, right? And then the chair recognizes them. And then he gives his point. And then we could say, okay, thank you. Uh, and then you could say, oh, Mr. Chair, point of order, I disagree with the county attorney's opinion. I would like to make a motion to ignore that opinion or something. Well, you know, you're free to do that. You get it?
Oh, I understand.
Uh, are you cool with that? So point of information for, for, for them to intervene?
We'll know when you vote on it, if that.
We'll know, we'll know.
I think also you could, like, in the past, when I was looking at the situation that happened to, to Tom, was that the chair allowed the staff to really maybe to not allow him to speak, to not allow.
He was outnumbered two to one too. So he was kind of.
He, I mean, they just, and, and so I don't know how you can put that in policy, that the board, board should be allowed to finish a meeting and not be interrupted or helped by staff. But the staff wants to say, you know, Chairman, Chairman Antonori, you know, Supervisor Crosby is violating the open meetings law. I don't know how, if there's a way in which we can kind of bring that where they can't interrupt or they can't stop them from speaking.
Well, there's also, you know, in, in Robert's Rules, you can do a motion to recess, right?
If it's getting out of control.
Yeah, you can do motion, you could, you could, you.
Well, the woman would do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you, and then you get a second and then the motion's on the floor to recess.
And why there's no second?
Then, then you don't recess.
Then he's stuck.
Then you're stuck, which is what was happening to this guy. Because he could never get the second.
And he could never finish his.
And that's just sadly the system. I'd say it.
I could give you this, but this is what I used to call the script, which is what Par Watcher came up with. And it says, here's the advisory from the, from the old attorney. I believe the direction and comments are beyond the scope, noticed, uh, discussion points posted by the clerk of the board. Any further comments in this matter may be a violation of the open meeting law. And then my part of the script was, I don't agree with the warning of the county attorney and I'm going to proceed with my comments, okay? And then she'd interrupt again, you know? So I, I, I put out.
That should be the end of.
What are you going to do? You're going to interrupt me every single?
Yeah, that should be the end.
Right. Otherwise you're just.
Yeah, the attorney, the, the attorney voices his point of concern. And then if you, if you then say, thank you.
My job's done.
His job's done. Yeah, they should not continue to intervene.
And I would tweak that script to say, you know.
They shouldn't relay it.
But I shouldn't use it.
The motion or to, to limit or close debate is up to the board, not, not the, not.
That is correct.
Uh, I can ask any question, the answer to which I can reasonably claim to have a bearing on my vote. Because they wouldn't even let me ask questions of the presenter.
I would agree with that too. But the, Tom, the difference here is you, you are dealing with a situation that unfortunately is not the case anymore. The problem also is in four years, or if something happens to one of us, God forbid, you could be dealing with that situation again. Nothing we do here is going to change that. I hate that.
Yeah, oh.
I mean, we could put something in writing, but just like we're undoing a lot of stuff, the next board can undo the same amount of stuff.
Yeah, they probably won't think of it. Yeah.
I don't have faith in any future boards.
No, I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, dude.
I think.
What, 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 what did you have, you had a, so, so policy 2015?
No, I, I.
Well, I mean, I think a lot of that though too is because there were the same, we had a legacy of board of supervisors who were the same people for that length of time. They didn't really need to change.
We can abstract English.
Yeah, this is the first.
You need to take off, Paul, what you're, just, yeah.
Yeah, we, we can, we can. Later.
But this is, this is a good discussion because we, we do have two new board members. The majority of the board is new. Now's the time to make sure the meetings are being run in a way you're comfortable with.
Is this draft a good starting point to edit the draft or?
No, I don't think so. I think it's a joke. Pretty much a whole thing.
I see a lot of similarities between this and the Roberts Rules of Order, so.
I'd have to look at those. One that I scribbled all over, which Laura sent me, my scribbles. And so he was here to forward that to, uh.
Just, just some, just some stuff that you brought to me, um, before we got sworn in. With regard to getting stuff, I, I don't like the process that used to be in place for getting stuff on the agenda. So what I wanted to do is change that to any member of the board can place something on the agenda. What you, what, what you get is you get, you can do one, one per meeting. So that keeps you from like putting 15 things on the agenda. But I think any member of the board, if you have an issue concerned, you want to put it on the agenda, you should be able to put it on the agenda, so.
So it doesn't need chair approval?
Doesn't need chair approval, it goes on, one per per meeting, that, so you don't, so, for example.
Does the same go for work sessions, then, if one?
Work work sessions, um, I don't think it should be limited to one, I mean, it would be.
No, I'm saying it just goes on at the chair, at the, um, members' request, we just create the work session. We don't need the chair to approve it as a work session. You just make sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, if there's an, if there's a regular meeting, if if Tom wants to put something on, or Kathleen, like, with Douglas or someone wants to put something on, I, they should be allowed to do that.
Yeah.
One, 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 because I don't, I don't want like fifty of them. Right, so you get one per meeting, if you have a special item you want on the agenda, you just say, this is, Laura, this is my special item, I want this put on the agenda. Now, you do that with the risk of when you motion, you don't get a second.
Mm-hmm.
So, just so you know, but you do get it on, right? You probably get the second with.
And is it, can it be repeated, like, every meeting? You said one meeting, so then the next meeting, it's the same, I I put back on the agenda.
If they wanna make that their one item, then then.
Constantly.
If it's their one item, then, you know, then they they move it, and I get a, well, 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 and I've done that, I've done it. I've done, I've done that before, and you you get it, and then nobody seconds it, and.
Okay.
Okay, next, no, the, you know, the mess, the the motion doesn't move, so next agenda.
So that is a good point, so, you know, for instance, slaughterhouse, right?
Right.
I found out that there's supposedly gonna be one in our, and I thought, we're thinking of doing one. And I wanted to, how do I go about talking to you and say, hey, can you look? Instead of going to you, because maybe I'm not gonna come in, or maybe I don't get you, or maybe you're out, and it's one of those time-sensitive things. How can I say, hey, Frank, can you look into this, because we wanna do a slaughterhouse? This is what I hear, can you find out from your sources if you have any, is this, if this is true? You see what I'm saying?
And that comes back, I think the open meeting, that's another open meeting law question that I don't feel comfortable with, I mean.
So and I could say, I'd have to go to you or say, Frank, can we have a one session on the slaughterhouse? Let's just make thirty minutes.
No, you just tell.
You just tell Laura.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Okay, so there's good things about the open meeting laws and and the the process of keeping things slow. Now, we're not as slow as courts finding meetings, or just vindictive, but but, uh, part of of the whole open meeting law stuff is so you don't just pop the stuff and nobody has. I didn't hear about that, because you only had twenty-four hours notice, well, there's emergency meetings, we're gonna have emergency meetings with less than twenty-four hours notice, I think.
Yeah, we have to, and then.
Well, so so that's it, you bring up another point, so, so we should, we should codify work sessions for the next meeting are generally on the Thursday prior, and then we do two meetings a month.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that should be, and then any other meeting would be considered a special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so if you wanna do a special work session, or, like, we got the budget coming up, we could actually say, for the budget, we're gonna, like you've done, is we're gonna do work sessions, but if you wanna do a, like, you talked about the slaughterhouse thing, that would be a special, special work session. And then you bring it up to Laura, and then we'll we'll have, now, that would be, what do we do, those seventy-two hours?
So twenty-four hours to post, we need twenty-four hours to post any meeting. Um, an emergency meeting is less than twenty-four hours.
So it's not an emergency meeting, it's it's just, it's just a special meeting.
Because the emergency, there is criteria, we have to then also defend why we, it's life and health and safety kind of stuff.
You wanna do it, you wanna do a special, so, and then we should try to do those on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yeah.
But Wednesdays, that's just like, you know, special, like, emergency.
We try to do work.
Yeah, yeah, they they got. But we should, we should try to limit our meetings to Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then that gives them time to answer questions and get other things done. And then it doesn't bury Laura, because then she'll be, she'll be doing meeting notices.
In minutes.
In minutes, right, so so as a courtesy, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we should try to get all of our business on those two days.
Uh, here's, here's a a use of a of a term that I just used minutes ago.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna quote somebody, a a former attorney, who was, I I just conferred with person X and person Y, and yes, I believe that in this instance, direct selection is in the best interest of the county.
What, yeah, I don't know what that means.
Well, yeah, like, best interest of the county, what does that mean?
No, I I just didn't know the context of the situation.
You could, you you're very meticulous.
I know, why? It pulls out.
No.
I don't know this story.
I have everything, I can't necessarily find it. So that that brings up the, well, what does it mean to say best interest of the county? Does it mean, it's in the best interest of eligibility?
Oh, it's that.
It's in the best interest of quality, it's in the best interest of me. Who, what does that mean, say? Uh, and I just said that a few minutes ago, I said, well, whatever's in the best interest of the county. I forgot.
Saying it's a phrase that's become trapped.
Yeah, like, I've used it all the time, so, well, who is the county? So anyway, I don't wanna impugn anybody, edit it.
Yeah, so, so the, like, I'll I'll go for this, other for this too, because because I wanna make sure that they represent constituents, I represent, so, this, the the previous policy denied a member from doing that, you know, so I I think that was not proper. Um, so if any member of the board of supervisors wants to put something on the agenda, they should have the ability to put something on.
We should explore that.
What?
We should explore it.
No, that's, no, no, that's the, that's the, to to tweak these, and then we'll vote on these, right? So, I mean, that's just my 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 opinion, so that would be one thing I would recommend as a, as a, as a change there.
And, you know, there's a lot of times throughout the week when we're preparing agendas, I confer with Laura about agenda language, because, you know, directors put stuff into agenda quick, that's a little rough around the edges sometimes and needs some polishing to make it appropriate, so that's the kind of stuff we do in our office that hopefully makes your jobs easier.
Polish.
Mm-hmm. And from my role, and I'm making sure the agenda item is ready for the board, so you're not getting.
Well, I mean, so if Kathleen wants to throw something on the agenda, she calls, she calls Laura, Laura kinda scribbles down her raw thought, and then you look at it and.
And I, and I can determine if it's something that maybe I'm gonna need more time to, and I would confer with you and say, okay, I agree, this needs, I'm not that, you need my agreement, but in order to make this conversation the most productive it can be for the board, can we, can I provide this information or that information to you, and you know, maybe?
Well, I'd say, if I say, okay, I wanna talk about a point of entry.
Mm-hmm, right, and I'm working on that.
Right, so, um, I would need to have some kind of presentation or some kind of discussion or something that's already, that I I put together, or I'm gonna say I'd like to have, you know, the mayor of Douglas talk about what's going on. That would be something, I mean, I can't just put something on there just because they all wanna talk about it, I don't have any kind of doubt.
Right, and then so there, there may be some back and forth between me and the board member, to make sure that staff is helping you as much as.
What you can have is the bureaucrats of attorneys changing your agenda item, what you're gonna vote on into something other than what you gotta, gotta be careful, approve it.
Right.
Just approve it.
Yeah, if I, if I were to do anything with any one of your agenda.
Polish, or is it changed, then you change from night into day?
Right, I would wanna make sure I had your approval before I changed anything.
And I guess that that also comes sort of to, like, your role too, when we're looking at that, about, you know,
Polish.
Polishing and stuff like that, so this is an ongoing theme we have to think about, right?
Yeah, and some of it's learning as we go.
All right, anything else?
No, sure.
I thought this was actually kind of productive.
Team building.
Yeah.
Did you say county?
No, kind of productive, kind of, kind of, you're, yeah, I should, I should speak a lot of, right? Kinda, kinda, this is, this was productive, so, I get, I mean, I get the point, I know what we're trying to do here, but I unfortunately, I think you're you're suffering from PTSD.
Sure.
And and it was, it was awful.
Oh, yeah, it was.
We sucked, and I was.
Board of Supervisors PTSD.
There was no respect given to you, for your office to at least let you finish, to, you know, I mean, they tried to put you off in every which way, and I, I mean, I saw that, I was like, holy cow. So I understand where you're coming from, you do have a lot, but how do you also, that's human nature in a lot of cases?
It's it's the nature of politics, so I've seen, I've seen it at the bigger scale, capital, when you have, the Democrats wanna speak and they get ruled out of order, they, you know, it's 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 just unfortunate that he he was two to one, right, he was, he was outnumbered two.
Was, there was definitely, I mean, the county attorney was terrible, and and had no respect for your, for your position in that you're elected by the constituents, be able to speak your mind.
Yeah, we could remedy some of that this afternoon.
Love that, right?
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, I understand both sides, but I I do think, because you're elected, because you're the ones that can pay the price, that kind of respect now doing is speak your mind on this very important.
All right.
And then we're gonna have an open meeting loss, they got our questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm, we need to get back on that, and I'm, talk to the Ombudsman, it's probably not gonna be in April, like.
No, no, nothing, this, everything's in.
Is that a steady person?
Yeah.
But this is the Ombudsman, they're really cold to everyone.
I wanna get him on record with some certain points, and then, like I said, I wanna go with with Crea, I really wanna challenge the opening.
I do too.
I did, when it, when when we talked to him, and and he even said stuff without me soliciting the point, he said, he said something like, if somebody's a a bad actor, then you really have no choice type of thing, so. You know, like that.
But I mean, I mean, that's some of the stuff that we're talking about here, and I I think that the the Title Thirty-eight has been extrapolated well beyond the legislative intent and the intent of the voters, basically, to make sure we're doing things transparently.
But it can be used to make you not even be able to do your job.
Right, but you're, I mean, just like you said, so if we're not executing public policy, that's the way I look at it. All public policy discussions should be transparent and in the open like we're doing right now. But if you wanna call me up and say, hey, I wanna respond, you've done press releases before, how would you, what would you do here to put this in the paper? And I don't think that's an open meeting law violation, I really don't.
Neither, or, you know, hey, did you just see what happened, what the sheriff came out and said all this stuff? We need to react in a timely manner, not, by the time we figured out to react, it was almost two weeks.
I know, I know, I know. That's where I I wanna get him on record for that, and that provides us some protection.
Yeah.
And then if we wanna, if somebody wants to go forward with it, which I do, I think we should challenge it and say that we we want this fixed, and we think it's being abused. And I know there is someone being investigated up in Phoenix for abusing their power to to do things, using the power of the law to go after political enemies. So that's part of that argument, too.
So from what I've heard today, the direction is for staff, we can continue to tweak that draft and add in some of the information that you discussed today about agenda planning and point of order.
You wanna see my script?
Yeah, and see your scribble, and and we can come back to you, um, in May?
Yeah.
Um, with another draft? And you can, of course, send your comments on the draft too, as we go in the center of time, to Laura, and we can incorporate this as well. Are we getting there? Okay.
Good, all right.
So the next meeting will be at two o'clock this afternoon, and it will be an executive session, potentially, well, it will be, uh, for the purposes of receiving outside counsel advice regarding indemnification of supervisors for defense and defense costs incurred. That'll be two o'clock, so any other discussions? I know you won't, you won't be there, that's fine. Um, well, that's it, and then we will adjourn.